The whole meeting for July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five to order on the docket. Eric, is you first with the H R I, H R A update? Yeah. I'm in the right alphabet. Let's just, let's just admit that.
I understood what you were saying. How did I get this thing to work? All right, perfect. Yes, good morning, commissioners and county staff. Thanks for giving me an opportunity just to touch base with you guys, kind of a mid-year review. Obviously, we'll chat again prior to levy requests and things like that, but wanted to get a chance to highlight some of the work that we're doing throughout the year and just have an open dialogue if you guys have questions for us. And what we're doing, we always like to start off, kind of every presentation, just reminding you guys what our mission is at the H R A, again, Housing Redevelopment Authority. Our mission is to support the creation of affordable housing, economic development, and redevelopment projects toward a more vibrant Crow Wing County. We are your county H R A. We are your redevelopment arm, all of those good things. So we take that certainly very seriously and try to affect housing in the community, throughout the county, throughout your larger population centers, and try to find some of that workforce housing, some affordability into there, too. Just kind of jumping in, this project we've been working on since two thousand and sixteen, actually, it's Brainerd Oaks, Serene Pines, Del Mar Estates. You've certainly heard of this before. To those that are new on the board, just a real quick recap, these are all three developments that were tax forfeited, and we're just sitting there, they got tax forfeited in, you know, right after the recession in two thousand and eight, sometime in there. Sat for about ten years and were reinvigorated. We were able to convey these lots to us, about one hundred and twelve in total, and we were able to convey those to the H R A, work with a developer to put together a redevelopment agreement for building single-family homes in all of these neighborhoods, and it has been successful. We are certainly proud of what the work has been done there. We're very, very happy with the developer that's working with us now, level contracting, and we think they're doing a great job out there in all of them. The cool thing is they're almost done. We've got three lots, three lots left to sell. That doesn't mean they're all built yet, because there are a number that are in construction as we speak. We do expect the developer to purchase the rest of those by year end, and we'll get to the next slide a little bit. We are going to continue on and actually add a couple of parcels of land to that redevelopment agreement so we can get even more houses built in that neighborhood. Some of the quick kind of stats that I always like to bring to your attention, because it does impact all of our county residents. When we started this back in two thousand and sixteen, the E M V estimated market value of all of those lots was just over a million bucks, about a million sixty-five thousand. Again, about one hundred and twelve lots, just sitting there, not generating any tax revenue for the county, for the city, or the school districts. So as we built that out, the, and I just looked at this last week through Crow Wing County records, estimated market value now of all the units that have been built is just over thirty million five hundred thousand. So that is a huge impact, not only to the city of Brainerd, but to the county residents, right? That builds that tax base up, and that's generating about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of taxes in those three developments. Interestingly enough, a year ago, when I was in front of you guys at budget, the estimated market value was just shy about twenty, in twenty-eight million. So we raised about one point seven million in additional construction throughout the year, but the cool thing is those taxes that are generated by all of those houses actually went down. You might look at that and kind of quiz yourself, like, why would that be a good thing, right? The piece of the pie, as our former administrator used to always talk about when we're talking about building tax base, that piece of the pie gets smaller as your pie gets bigger, right? And so as we build out more houses, not just in these developments, but throughout the county, your share of the pie does go down. So that is why, you know, really, as you look at a snapshot like this, that those taxes for those homes, the more that they're built, they're actually going to be generating a little bit less tax revenue for the county. Again, that is in part with your body doing what you can do to keep those taxes relatively flat as you can, right? But kind of a cool data point, I do like to always bring that up, and then as you can see, you know, some of the pictures there, those are pictures out in Brainerd Oaks and Serene Pines and Del Mar Estates. It's nice to see the product that actually is being put out there. These are truly workforce-level housing homes, and, you know, again, very, very close to being done there. Talked a little bit about this for just a moment. This is two outlots that we actually have in the Brainerd H R A. You can see the two green parcels there, one's an outlot that's rather large, one's a, looks like a residential kind of lot that we would have built on. Brainerd H R A is working with Crow Wing County H R A and the city of Brainerd to actually convey these lots to the Crow Wing County H R A for the developer level contracting to actually build on these. They're going to be building on that larger parcel. That smaller parcel is going to act as an in-road to build a roadway in there, to get some infrastructure in there, and we're going to end up with another eighteen units. They're going to be building nine duplexes out there. As you can see on this, this is going to be a mock-up of what those duplexes are going to look like. We are excited about this, to get a little bit more density into that neighborhood. As you can look to the west there, there is some multifamily in there already. As we move east to that outlot that we're going to be building on, those will be duplexes, and then we'll naturally progress into those single-family homes. Really cool project that we've been working on. We've actually, at the H R A, owned that outlot, that large one, really since the kind of two thousand and three, two thousand and four timeframe, and didn't know what we were going to do with it. We had purchased it from the church that is just to the north there. Originally had intended to create a park out of this, but the city of Brainerd and their parks and recreation department were not looking to pick up any more green space in the city, and thus it would have just been a wasted, unbuildable lot if we had not been able to also acquire that roadway easement to get in there. And so we're excited about that. We'll be working on that towards the end of this year with hopefully breaking ground towards the end of the year. We also did work with the city to request a grant for infrastructure funding through Minnesota Housing. Those grants don't come along very often. It's really hard to get grant funding for the infrastructure, the water, sewer, curb, gutter, and so there are some dollars limited available for outstate Minnesota. We're hopeful that we can generate, the ask was about one hundred and seventy thousand of that. Infrastructure to get in there is about four hundred and fifty thousand, so that is just another impediment to our developers that we're trying to work through. So joint project between Brainerd and Crow Wing County, H R As, the city of Brainerd, and we're really excited about that and proud of hopefully pushing that forward. Again, we think it'll be a good product. Same developer that is doing the other build-outs in Brainerd Oaks, it'll be a similar project or product. It'll look very similar, so you'll have good consistency throughout that neighborhood.
Eric, do you have a preliminary plat for that area at all? How those houses would be laid out? I can see there's wetland in the south end of that lot.
Yeah, we do. So it would be in the north portion of it, knowing that, you know, they still have to do all of the SWIP permitting with Minnesota to get that done. Monty's been working with his architecture firm, and they do have those plans specked out, and it does not appear that there would be any issues on the city Brainerd side of things at this point.
And I wasn't really around much when the Brainerd Oaks was all going through. Are those all pretty much single-family homes?
They are. They're all single-family homes, so this will be, you know, our first foray into a more higher density with the duplex, but obviously there's still single-family units in there, just shared walls. We get a little bit better bang for our buck out there as far as the cost per door. So it comes down a little bit by doing those duplexes.
And there are multiplexes to the west of that, right?
Correct. Yeah. Again, you can kind of see, just to the blue outline, there's some multifamily just to the west there. So it does offer a good transition into that single-family residence.
And will all those people access just through that road that you have there, that lot there, or there won't be any access over to?
Yep. So that roadway will be a turnaround and will be large enough to get fire and safety equipment in there. So that was previous iterations. I think he was thinking eight of the duplexes, but he was able to squeeze a ninth in with the roadway that he's been plotted out and kind of look at. But that'll be the only way in and out of that neighborhood. Any other questions?
No.
Housing trust fund, we always like to give you guys an update throughout the year on what we're doing there. To date, we've funded just shy of one point seven million in loans through the trust fund. We are closing one, or actually closed one yesterday, so it does actually boost that number up, just over one point seven million. That would be twenty-two funded loans throughout the program. As you see on the screen there, it shows that two were, or one was approved for funding. That's that one owner occupied rehab that did close yesterday for just over twenty thousand. But the breakdown of the loans that we've done so far, thirteen owner occupied rehab loans, we know that rehab is very instrumental and integral to keeping our housing stock vibrant and for that next generation. So that is an emphasis that we have, certainly. We've had eight down payment assistance loans. That just helps, you know, get that homeowner into the home that they might have lacked ability to do that without a down payment. And then we've done two no-construction-or-development financing loans. The one that we financed this year and closed was for My Neighbor to Love Coalition. If you're not aware of what they do, they are located in kind of northwest Brainerd, over by the Civic Center. They are creating homes and really with the idea to get people out of homelessness. They're able to have some very, very affordable rents over there, and it's a community that's being built out through that new nonprofit. They've built out now twenty units, or sorry, sixteen units. They are building another twelve that has just started, and we're certainly excited about that, that, those housing developments there. Do you have some applications that are on hold and in review? That just means that we're either waiting for funding or we're waiting for paperwork. Similar to with My Neighbor to Love, they had actually applied in two thousand and twenty-three, and we just now, this year, had the funding come available, so we were able to actually process that. So, you know, sometimes these projects are going to wait for a while, and that's okay. People are willing to stay on the waiting list for available funding, but we obviously have to wait to make sure that we've got the funding available to do those loans, but it doesn't mean that people aren't trying and sometimes waiting a couple of years to get their opportunity for that. Also, kind of a fun data point, we funded our first loan, I want to say it was in twenty-two, and we've had three of them paid off. You know, we've certainly had some discussion about our length on our loan terms. We've had two owner occupied rehab loans pay off and one down payment assistance loan paid off for about sixty-five thousand dollars in total that's been paid back out to us, and then we'll get back into production for new projects. So it is working so far, and we're pleased with getting some paybacks early. Again, if you're going to sell your house on those rehab loans, then you have to pay us back. Those are kind of the terms, right? You either have it out to term on a twenty-year loan, or there are some triggering factors if you move, move, or if you're no longer living there as your primary residence. So those are some of those safeguards there, that we get our funds back early in those cases.
I've got a question for you.
Yes?
So the, this is the housing, this slide you have, this is the housing trust fund?
Correct.
And then total loans funded to date, one point six million. Is that including the one million for the lofts on Navatney?
It is, yep.
Then, so then six hundred and ninety-four thousand, okay.
Yep.
And then, for example, like, if it's, hmm, the rehab, somebody, like this picture of this house?
Yeah.
Somebody would come and put an application in, say, hey, I need to rehab my house?
Right.
If they're approved, they get the money, how long is it for, and what's the interest rate?
Yep. So for our owner occupied rehab, which is that one on the screen, I believe that one is over in Garrison, that one, or all of our rehab loans, you know, they're typically a twenty-year repayment. There's no payment requirement monthly. It is truly a balloon payment. The owner, all of our rehab loans, still with our board, have been authorized at zero percent for those, knowing that, again, the individuals that are likely getting these rehab loans are either on fixed income, so social security individuals that may own their house outright but can't afford an extra payment on there. That's why they haven't done that deferred maintenance. We know that, you know, if they come to term on that, they, you know, they likely will either be moving on from that home or hopefully able to refinance if they needed to at twenty years.
So on the title, or, or I, somewhere, is there like a lien file?
Yes, we file a mortgage.
Went fifteen years down the road, if it's going to be for sale, that has to be paid off first?
Correct. So we, you know, we never know if we're going to be in first position, second position on some of those homes. The ideal for these rehab homes is we're likely going to be in first position if they've already paid off their homes. But first or second lien doesn't matter, we're still going to be a lien holder. We file all of our documentation with the county, so fifteen years down the road, if I'm not here, we know what the terms were.
Sure. So then the lofts on Navatney, that if these loans are twenty years, and you don't have to make a payment until it's a balloon payment, is it the same for that million dollars?
It was, yes.
So, so they could, so they don't, their bill isn't due for twenty years?
Correct.
At no interest?
Yep. Yep, and certainly that was by design to offer the ability to lease up, make sure that they are stabilized in their rents, and, you know, they can certainly refinance if they do refinance, or they change ownership. You know, that is pretty typical within a twenty-year period on a commercial building. We would be repaid at that point. That wouldn't transfer.
I would assume there's kind of an, like, for example, this picture here, there's kind of an income criteria, correct?
There is.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, and we modeled that after, you know, we work with, on rehab loans with Minnesota Housing, and with deed, actually, on two different rehab programs that, you know, have even smaller income limitations, knowing that there's a little bit of a, you know, blind spot or, you know, missing middle is what they call it. We go all the way up to one hundred and fifteen percent of the area median income as far as a qualification, whereas the Minnesota Housing is really geared to that fifty percent A M I, and deed goes from about fifty to eighty percent. We always try to utilize those other dollars first, prior to utilizing the trust fund if we're available.
So then, back to that lofts on Navatney, they had, they, I would, I think you told me that they have to set aside a certain amount of apartments?
The rents.
The rent is like, can you just explain that?
Yeah. So there's a percentage, and so the forty percent of their rents have to be affordable rents at one hundred and fifteen percent of the area median income, and that is a number that's given to us by HUD every year, and so that has to get updated by the management group every year, they have to look at those. The next twenty percent have to be affordable at eighty percent of A M I or lower. So we're building in about sixty percent, or building in sixty percent of those rents to be affordable at one fifteen or less, and then the last forty percent of those units can be at market rate if they're not already. We are typically seeing that those rents aren't exceeding much more than that one hundred and fifteen percent on the market side, but that's the idea is to, if we're going to be a partner in these programs or in those projects, that we are going to reserve, you know, a sixty percent stake in those rents to make sure that they're affordable.
Hundred and fifteen percent?
Yep.
How much rent would that be like?
You know, it's around thirteen hundred at this point?
Hundred?
Yeah. You and I may not believe that that's necessarily affordable. Unfortunately, what HUD tells us is that that's the threshold, that one fifteen. You know, and those numbers, again, we have to base it off of at least a target number, right? But that's where we're at.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, one more thing. On these, you, you show on the other one, we know how much came in on the, on the Brainerd Oaks and stuff, you're showing how much tax revenue extras coming in and stuff. Do you have any way on this slide here to say that, how much tax revenue is coming in because we improved that rehab home?
Yes, rehab homes.
Is tax coming in, you know, even though we question sometimes the amount or the interest rate on the lots in Navatney? I know that's come up before, but how much tax is that bringing in? There's no, it's, you know?
Yeah, so.
So even though we might not be getting it back in a payment at this time, we're still, the county and the city or whatever is still receiving all the tax revenue from those properties?
Yeah, no, good question. For new development, that's a lot easier to kind of put a thumb on. I believe Lofts Navatney was somewhere around eighty-four thousand in tax revenue. That was going to be out there basically after year two, because there's always that leg with taxes on new development.
So that, that property out there is bringing in about, you estimate? I mean, I'm not going to hold you to it.
Yeah, that was the approximate amount when I spoke with.
Thousand dollars a year?
Yeah, with the county last year, when they were kind of in the build, that was the estimate.
What do they have that valued at?
I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know. I would be happy to provide that next month when I'm back in front of you guys, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, so I just, I mean, you know, that sounds like a heck of a chunk of change.
On the other rehab ones, again, that's a little bit of a difficulty in the fact that, you know, your appraiser assessor isn't necessarily going to go out right as soon as that loan is done, because they wouldn't have reason to know that there are improvements being made. You know, probably going to need a, probably more like a five-year check on that to start to see if those improvements are in there, but that might not even be associated with the improvements, because we're seeing the real estate just increase whether or not you improve your property or not. We know that that's out there. You know, the big impact on those, maybe not necessarily on the tax implication side, is making sure that those homes are available for that next generation, and that deferred maintenance is actually happening. So if, you know, the individual does sell or they do pass away, that person coming in, it doesn't have to be a demo, it can be a, you know, a work in progress.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The one point six nine four that you're talking about to date, what, what's that date? Is that two thousand and twenty-two?
From when we started doing some loans? Yeah, our first loans were done in two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay. And the ones that you said have repaid, were those because of the sale of the property?
Yeah. One of them was a down payment assistance that they've sold their property since then, and two of them were rehab loans that they have also sold. One was maybe refinanced completely, so they still had to pay us back, and the other one was a sale. So a little bit of a mix, certainly what we expect. You know, I, back when I was in banking, the mortgage, when an individual would take out a mortgage, I think the average lifespan of that mortgage was about seven to ten years. So even though we've got, you know, these down payment assistance loans, we certainly believe that they will recycle prior to that, that terming out, because that's a typical life cycle now. I might be in the strange one, because I've been in my house thirteen years. So I exceed that average, but typically, if you look at those averages across the country, those are recycling a lot quicker than that. So we expect to see those funds back before the term.
Yep. Also, the funds that are promised to the six oh five Laurel project, is that, that comes out of the trust fund, too, correct?
Yep, eight oh five, and so there are funds that are reserved at this point for that.
Yep.
Yep.
Do you have any updates on that?
We do. You know, the developer's still very committed to the project. We were looking to have them access some funding for the workforce housing development program last year through the state when they had record funding, didn't get that, which was, you know, not what was anticipated. I spoke with the developers three weeks ago, just to make sure that I understood where they're at. We're going to, you know, jointly try to look at, there's a housing tax credit that is available through the state of Minnesota that started last year, or two years ago, sorry, and they have sold out already this year. They sold out within the first seventy-five days of the year. Our plan is to try to get to business owners, to generate some interest in purchasing tax credits. The cool thing about that is, you know, a lot of us, or you hear a lot of chatter that maybe we don't want our tax dollars going to St. Paul, because we sometimes don't believe that they appropriate that correctly, but these housing tax credits, you actually get to say, I'm going to buy X amount of dollars of my state tax liability, and I'm wanting to go to project X. And you get to actually see those dollars at work in your community with that. So that's hoping to be the draw, to try to get some local interest in buying some of those housing tax credits. Still a pretty big gap, not going to lie about that. They have invested a lot of money into that property, though, and as you've, hopefully you've all driven downtown, you've seen that that building was taken down. So they are, they're still continuing to invest money in there. They are committed to it. I don't have a construction date, but we are eagerly trying to help them get to the start line. It's a large project for the city of Brainerd, it's a large project for both the Crow Wing and the Brainerd H R As.
Thank you.
Yep. Other questions on trust fund? We'll wrap up here. Just a couple items of note, as far as what we're working on as well outside of those initiatives. Good news, we've got some development interest in four more tax-forfeited properties over in Baxter. They have started that process within the last three weeks with us and with the city of Baxter. We are still allowed, even with the legislative changes, for tax-forfeited properties. There are some different timelines. These are all prior to two thousand and eighteen as far as forfeiture, so we can kind of utilize the same process that we had then to convey lots into, hopefully convey lots with your permission, into our purview, and then we can get those into the developer's hands for a pretty nominal cost to get those developed. You know, a lot of these lots that are tax-forfeited throughout the county, especially if they're in those city municipalities, they've got aging infrastructure there, so that really is a blighted property. So we'd like to get some tax revenue, tax base built back on those, so when those facilities need to be improved upon again, that there's some tax base to support that. So still working on that. We're excited that we've got some movement. Noted that we've got some, actually, I know I was in front of you guys probably three months ago talking about some housing trust fund funding that we were interested in applying for. It turned out that the state and Minnesota Housing allowed us to do it directly, so we did do that. We were successful in securing a hundred and fifty thousand to come into our housing trust fund. That wasn't the max amount that we were potentially allowed to get, so that is a little bit of a disappointment, a little bit of a consolation. There were fifty-four applicants for those funds around the state. Thirty-six of us were granted funding. Of that, thirty of those thirty-six were approved at a hundred and fifty thousand, so we're with a lot of our neighbors. Three were approved for the max funding throughout the state, and then there were three recipients that were less than that. So we're right in that sweet spot. This is money that, again, would have gone outside of the Crow Wing County area had we not applied for it. So we're excited to get that. We're still working on the grant agreement with Minnesota Housing, but that'll be coming hopefully soon. We did apply for infrastructure funding for that outlot project in Brainerd Oaks, so we will find out about that, along with the city of Brainerd, in hopefully September, so we can get that project moving. And then I don't know if you have received any information, but there is a housing summit that's going to be put on by Dolly Matten over at GLAR on August sixth, and I know she's intending to invite all of the commissioners, all of the kind of city council members, E D As, things like that, just to talk about housing. I will be one of the speakers there. We've got Ben Winchester from the University of Minnesota, if you've ever heard him speak. He's a really engaging speaker, talks about the rural kind of housing market and very, very knowledgeable. So we're excited to do that, and then obviously we're in the middle of our budget season, too, so we're looking forward to having those discussions along with you guys. Don't want to take up too much more of your time. If you have any further questions, please let me know.
I have another question. So I've been kind of, I've always been kind of an advocate that we need, the county needs to get rid of as many tax forfeit properties that are not in our timber management program. Specifically, like, there used to be a lot of lots, like in Brainerd, like, just lots that were sitting there and trying to get rid of those. I had a call from one of my constituents on the other side of Mill Avenue, and there's a lot right next to him, it's only forty feet wide.
Sure.
And I can't remember the number. I called Gary, to Gary and talked to him about it, and I'm just going to say it was around ten, I think we had maybe ten or twelve thousand dollars on it or something.
Sure.
But the assessments for the city of Brainerd was like eight or nine thousand dollars. So my question is, do you ever, well, I guess we could probably give you that lot, and then you could sell it a lot cheaper.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But do you ever try to negotiate with the city of Brainerd to say, if you don't take these assessments off of there, we're never going to, we're never going to be able to get this back on the tax rolls?
Yep. Great question. Proof is in the Brainerd Oaks, Serene Pines, Del Mar Estates redevelopment project that we did there through putting that together, and that was certainly my predecessor that put that together, but they were able to work with the city of Brainerd to not reassess those properties, but then took a little bit of a discount. So the developer had offered a certain amount of dollars for all of those properties. Built into that was some funding to Crow Wing County, some funding, actually, the Crow Wing County H R A gets funding to convey those lots and basically get the legal side of it pushed through, and then the rest of the funds went to the city of Brainerd to offset. So it wasn't a one-to-one that the city of Brainerd was able to receive off of that, looking at doing something similar in Baxter as well, and they have worked with some developers, namely Habitat for Humanity, to try to offset their assessments as well, because that is an impediment to a lot of the development. It's probably not a situation where we would ever go and say, you should waive all of your funds, city of X, because they certainly invested those funds in their infrastructure Because they certainly invested those funds in their infrastructure at that point. But if there's a happy medium and it's, you know, not too hard of a sell from us to say, hey, you know, if you can ease off on some of these assessments, we're able to get some development going, get some tax base there. So it's something we're always looking at, and as we continue to to try to go through that tax forfeit list as well, we work with those municipalities always to to ask those questions on behalf of the developer.
That's good to hear. Thanks, Eric.
Yep.
Eric, you also worked quite a bit with, back in the day, with Breezy Point had a lot of those same types of situations where they had, they had a lot of assessments because they'd run some infrastructure through there and they had a bunch of lots that were sitting out there, tax forfeiture at a high rate. And I don't know if you worked with any of them, or they worked, they worked those through, but it was.
Yeah, they did. And we haven't had as much impact up in Breezy yet. There's still a handful of them out there, and we continue to try to to find some some development partners up there, but, you know, same same reasoning is how we would go up into that and try to to get some, you know, concessions if possible, knowing full well that they've already used their tax dollars to to likely put that infrastructure in. It's, you know, it's, you hate to say it's a win-win when you get that because you've already spent the money to to put that infrastructure in, but it's kind of that but-for clause that if you don't do this but-for, it's not gonna happen.
Right.
And so we just try to, we try to lessen the burden, but also get some things moving as far as the development side.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, I'll let you guys get back to your days.
Eric, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the time.
With that, we'll have Mr. Danielson show up.
Good morning, Jory.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, Jory Danielson, Administrative Services. Wanted to thank you for the time today, and we get to get in front of you and give you a a quick update of where we're at halfway through the year at Administrative Services. Nancy's gonna lead off the presentation with a financial update.
Good morning, everyone. Just a few slides for you this morning on finance and where we're at so far in twenty twenty-five, some things that we've been notified about. So as you know, we're in the midst of our budget process. So here is our budget timeline graph that we have here before you. We are at the point in the purple there in August. We're starting to work on or have worked on our preliminary CIP, which you have all received, and then our operating budgets, we're working on those as well. So this is just kind of that overview again of what our timeline is for our budget schedule. I know you've seen this before. Some mid-year highlights for you. We were recently notified by the GFOA in twenty twenty-five that we received the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. The county also received the GFOA Award for Outstanding Achievement in Popular Annual Financial Reporting, again, for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. And the county was notified that we received the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for Fiscal Year twenty twenty-five. We recently submitted our ACFA and our PAFRA for fiscal year twenty twenty-four now that our audit is wrapped up. So good news there.
Nancy?
Yes.
Maybe just for, well, for my benefit and for everybody else that maybe watches this, GFOA?
Government Finance Officers Association.
And then I think you said another acronym to.
PAFRA is the Popular Annual Financial Report, maybe is what I noted.
The ANACFA.
AnACFA is the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Woo, I remembered them. It is. Also, as I said, our twenty twenty-four financial audit has been completed. I'm happy to report that our audit findings were reduced. We had thirteen audit findings and for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, those were reduced to four audit findings for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, so we're trending in the right direction, so I'm happy to report that to you as well. And then, as you know, we have implemented a five-year budget plan that is starting this year for years twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty. We have also expanded from a five-year capital improvement plan to a seven-year capital improvement plan this year. Our goal is to transition to a ten-year capital improvement plan, hoping to transition to that next year. I'm hoping you'll see a ten-year plan next year. So that's for twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty-two. I have been talking about a long-term financial plan. We will start drafting that this fall. So we just need a little bit of a reprieve from the budget process. I need to get that behind me a little bit further before we can start drafting that plan, but that is my plan for that. That'll be a team approach for sure. And then last but not least, one initiative that we're doing in finance is to look at cross-training, making sure there's a backup for some of the, you know, very important tasks that we have to do so that if people need to be away from the office, or they win the lottery and decide to leave the county, that we have backups in place for people to step in and cover for them so they don't always feel that they have to be connected all the time when they're trying to take some personal time away from the office. So we're working on that as well. That is all I have for finance. Do you have any questions for me?
No question, but I I'm gonna tell you that I think you guys do a great job up there. It's amazing how you keep all those numbers flowing from all the different departments and and still get all these awards. So thank you very much. I know it's time-consuming.
It is very time-consuming.
Thank you.
Yes.
Nancy, how many staff do you have?
Total staff in finance? Let me count. So we have Brittany, Kathy, Matthew, Cory, and Amy, and myself, and Jory. And then we have Amy Mickelson in elections as well.
So.
Yeah. They're phenomenal.
It's been been several years in a row that you've won that award, correct?
Yeah, we're over ten years in a row for those awards.
That's pretty impressive, so.
Yeah. The county has done phenomenal.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Oops, I think I went too far. Can you remember, sir?
All right, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, Jason McCooyak, the IT manager. We get to talk a little bit about IT, which really excites me, so if I talk too long, you can always tell me to be quiet.
Excites me, too. When it doesn't work.
When it doesn't work, exactly, yep. So so I'm just gonna start out with just some some stats of how many PCs we have. We have two hundred and fifty-two desktop computers on campus, seven hundred and ten laptops, five hundred and eighty phones. The soft phones is kind of a new trend that we're going with. Instead of having a physical desk phone, you can have a phone on your computer. So that way, if you're working from home, or if we wanna start to cut some costs, we can install a soft phone so you don't have to have that physical phone on your desk. There's mixed reviews on that. Some people love it, some people hate it because it's it's different, but it works really, really well in in a lot of situations. We have two hundred and ten printers and scanners throughout the campus, four hundred and forty-three tablets and iPhones, sixty squad cars, and then we provide IT support to eleven city agencies for their LETG and squad car access. Throughout the campus, we also have digital signage. That is something where we can, from each department has a group that manages their own signage for their departments. They can change it on the computer, and it automatically updates on the TVs you see out in the lobbies or in the, throughout the other hallways. In our data center, this is where it gets pretty impressive. We have fifteen physical servers. Those fifteen physical servers host over a hundred and thirty-five virtual servers. So everything that we do requires a hundred and thirty-five servers in the county. We have a hundred, or we have two main firewalls through the state and then a hundred and fifty-nine switches. Switches are like a twenty-four or forty-eight port device in network closets throughout every building. Each building has, can have fifteen or twenty of them, but all of our cameras, our HVAC, our printers, our PCs, the wireless access points, they all need to communicate, and that's how they all all communicate is through those switches. So it's pretty, I'd hate to like look through in like an X-ray and see all the cords in the walls of the buildings on the campus.
Can you go back to that other page?
Yeah.
I had a question. What is, what does it mean, like, seven hundred and ten plus a hundred and eighty-four? What is that? What does that mean?
That's how many computers have been added or changed in the last year. And so before, we used to have a lot more desktop computers, but as things have progressed, we've switched more to laptops. So instead of having so many desktops, we, our desktop number before would have been a lot higher, and now the desktop number's lower and the laptop number has increased.
But why, I believe we're right at about a five hundred and fifty employees. Why would it be seven hundred and ten? Why would somebody have two laptops?
Back in the day, we used to actually, if they, in order for the systems to work correctly, they they could not remote in without, they had to actually remote into a PC. Like sheriff's office attorneys, they all have to have two if they wanna work remotely because of the SIGIS requirements. You have to be, you can't bring that device home and access that that criminal justice network data. Same with squad cars. We have a lot of squad cars. Those all have mobiles, laptops in them as well. So that's where.
These iPad things that we, the county board, has, is that considered a laptop?
No, that's a tablet. That that's part of the four hundred and forty-three tablets and iPhones.
Okay.
Lot of devices.
Lot of, lot of devices.
Lot of devices.
Jason, the the laptop number would include laptops that are in squads for city facilities as well?
No, that would.
That would just be the support that you're providing.
The support we're providing, correct. Here's a slide of our work orders over the last, from twenty fourteen to twenty twenty-five. You can see an increase in work order numbers. For the year of twenty twenty-five, we're actually ahead of pace of what we were in twenty twenty-four. The next slide will kind of break down by month as far as, you know, the highest percentage. Our highest percentage was May at eighteen percent of completed work orders. At any given time, we hover around three hundred and fifty to four hundred and five open work orders. So that's stuff that's waiting to be worked on.
So when you say a work order, does somebody actually have to go on the, go on somewhere and they have to submit some type type of a work order?
Correct, yes.
So when Commissioner Lubkey calls you with trouble, that's, is that considered a work order? Because I I think half of those are probably.
More of a nuisance, I would think.
So we encourage all our users to put work orders in, and so like, prime example, if I walk through a building, I'll have five people stop me and say, oh, what about this? What about this? And so it's one of those things where I'm like, always like, oh, I've got a short memory, I'm getting older, can you put put a work order in so I remember to get that taken care of? But the staff is really good about putting work orders in for when like Commissioner Lubkey calls up or anybody else stops in the door. We have a lot of, a lot of walk-ins, so, yeah. Yeah. Any questions on the number of IT work orders? Here's our top five ticket subject types from twenty-three to twenty-four. Fish ER, those are those phishing scams, those fish, not not the ones that we send out as a test, but legitimate emails that come in that people are questioning that when they hit that report fish, it generates a ticket for us so we can investigate those tickets, so.
So if it's not an, if these phishing emails come in, do they have that yellow bar that that it says it's not an internal email?
If if it's an, if any external email that comes in from outside the county, so if I got an email from Debbie Erickson and it had the yellow bar, that's my first alert that that's not legit because she's not outside the organization.
Automatically, if it's not coming from inside, it's got, don't have the, it'll have the yellow bar.
Yellow bar, correct. And we're actually in the middle of implementing a new system now that will also start tagging them as promotional spam, like, high-risk, like, you don't often receive emails from this person. Are you sure you wanna open this email? So we're getting more and more vigilant of trying to think ahead of these guys, so, or put information in front of all the users to be like, let's think twice before we click so we don't click a bad link, so.
Do you think the testing, by the way, I'm current on my testing.
Thank you.
And I passed it. Thank you very much. Does you think that helps?
Yes, it actually, we have graphs over the years. I didn't bring any of those numbers today, unfortunately, but our numbers have been, our percentage has been going down. We started, I wanna say when we first started doing it, our click rate was over like six percent, and I believe we're down in the in the two percent rate range right now, so. So it definitely, definitely does help. But we need to, you know, you can't do the same thing over and over again. You gotta, you know, and that's where our our software right now does real-world events. So if there's something happening in the real world, that that company we work with, they'll automatically start generating the tickets to try to match that. So all of a sudden, if you see stuff about Ukraine coming into your email, it's because it's matching off the real-world events that are going on.
Another question, so when, I I think you were talking, I think maybe, I don't know if it was that personnel or somewhere, and you were talking about the the cloud.
Yes.
And how a lot of this stuff is gonna go in the cloud. Well, what happens if all of our stuff is in the cloud and this company or whoever's managing that for us, let's say they have a big screw-up and all of our stuff is up there, then then we're kind of screwed over, aren't we?
Yes, that's definitely a risk you have to take. A lot of these companies, that's why you have to really vet them very well to make sure they have redundant data centers. For example, the the company we're looking at for our our new law enforcement software, they've got five data centers throughout the United States. So that way, if one data center goes down, it automatically migrates to another one. The other big caveat to look at with these these cloud providers is being able to make sure that data stays yours and that if something happens and you decide to move away from there, that you can take your data back. Where some of these these companies say, once you upload it, it becomes their data. I'm like, uh-uh, that's that's my data, or that's the county's data. So we gotta make sure that as we're vetting these vendors, that they've got redundant data servers, that they got cybersecurity teams, and and, you know, good good backups to keep everything flowing.
Then I think another thing would be good, just for, if the chair would indulge me to, I think it'd be good for the public to know as we're working through the budget process and they wonder, geez, where's all my tax dollars going? Well, a lot of this technology that we have is getting to the point where these companies are kind of almost holding you hostage, and they, and the licensing fees.
Right.
Can you just talk about how that's getting to really go up and cost a lot of money?
Yep, back, you know, five years ago, a lot of software companies, I'd go out and go to Adobe and buy a license, and then it was my license, I could keep that software forever. Now companies are switching to what's called a SaaS, Software as a Service, and that's a monthly subscription. So then here, every year, they're like, you got your software, if you don't renew it, you lose access to your software. And I don't wanna say it's kind of like a nickel-and-dime type of theory, but it kind of is because all of a sudden, they're like, oh, I've got the software, I'm paying five dollars a month for it, but I want this extra feature. Oh, it's another two dollars a month to get that extra feature, and then it just compounds on top of that.
Compounds, yeah. It's kind of like at at home, if you have Netflix and Amazon Prime and all this stuff, and then all of a sudden, if you ever sit down and figure out that.
Right.
You probably got a, probably got a truck payment of three, four hundred dollars a month.
Right. You know, and I think I mentioned this at budget meeting, that it's it's just like your home stuff, where if you download an app from the iStore or the the Apple Store, the app's free now, where it used to be a dollar ninety-nine to download an app or whatever. But now, once you install that app, you open it up, it says, oh, it's gonna be seven ninety-nine a month or four ninety-nine a month. It's, everything's a subscription nowadays, so. And it's no different in in the government world, too, where our financial software, the company that we use right now, they're trying to move their clients to the cloud by twenty thirty. They're have gone as far as saying, if you want XYZ feature, we're not gonna offer that on-premise anymore, you gotta move to the cloud in order to get those features. So it's unfortunate, but it's the world we're living in. The two big things I wanna talk about is we got two new upcoming IT policies we're gonna be introducing. The first one is our AI policy, which is artificial intelligence. We haven't had an AI policy at the county ever because AI is new. When we sat down, we have a committee that kind of is going through the the policy of building this, and we started asking ourselves, you know, do we wanna ban ChatGPT, or do we wanna ban or block XYZ AI platform? There's so many of them out there. There's so many that are popping up every day of of AI platforms. We really needed to circle back and look at, what's the data that's being put in these AI platforms? We need to make sure that no private data is going in there, no personal information is going in there, no credit cards, no no HIPAA data. So that's kind of where we circle back to, is we're gonna create a policy that talks about what type of data can be put into the AI platforms. Every department, every meeting that anybody's going to, all they're talking about is, how can you do more with AI? Because everybody knows, you know, we're trying to, you know, leverage our hours and our days, and AI can really do that, but how you do it effectively and safely. The second policy that we're gonna work on doing is a social media policy on PC devices. So what this means is, if your job does not require you to use social media, you'll no longer be able to access it on a laptop or PC computer. If you have an iPhone or an iPad, that is fine, that is not as vulnerable as what a PC is. With a lot of these social media platforms out there right now, they're very vulnerable, there's a lot of ads that pop up, there's a lot of clickbait, where people click on things and it overtakes their computers, or overtakes their screens, or overtakes their accounts. There are several areas in the county that they do need to use social media for their job. For example, Dershowitz Wire, or, or Brian out at Highway, or Sheriff's Office, or Probations. We're not going to say, no, you can't use social media, we're just going to try to change how social media is used, on what devices you're using it on.
Because using it on those devices opens a portal to getting into our system-
Correct.
Wherever our system is.
Right, correct. And so, yeah, if we, if we can do it off a mobile device, that keeps us ten times safer than doing it off our, our county-owned computer, so.
So just another, this is kind of a crystal ball, in your crystal ball. You know, this will probably be gone, all of us will be gone, but I'd say, down the road, do you think that the county will? I, I think about like the McDonald's app, okay, I have the McDonald's, I order my food, then I just pull in there and I say G forty-seven and they pull up. Do you think it'll ever get to the point where we, at the county, somebody comes in for a birth certificate or whatever have you, and, and it's more, they just put it in, what do you think, Dan? Because I know I went to a doctor's office down in Florida, and there's nobody there to check in. I had to check in myself.
Yep.
Or two.
One person.
Go to the doctor here, they have kiosks for self-check-in.
But I mean, I wonder if we, I wonder if we at the county will ever get to that point where it's more AI-
In certain areas, we will, and there's, Jason and his team are currently working on some opportunities for how we can leverage some of those things. There are certain things where we won't be able to get to that point. You know, you talk about a birth certificate, you're never going to be able to order a birth certificate through the app, pull up to the parking place, and somebody come out and give, give it to you. You have to verify-
Yeah.
Information with some of that stuff. So, most likely that isn't going to be the case, but there may be a pre-check-in-
Right.
Opportunity where, here's the services I need from Crow Wing County today, I fill out all of that on my app, and by the time I come there, those services are ready for me and, and eliminate some of that wait time.
Right. And so much of it comes down to all the different systems we tie into. A lot of our systems that we use at the county are, are legacy systems that are run by the state, that are still years and years behind where we're at today. So, in order to get to there, you have to have those tie-ins and have those, those systems updated, so. But eventually, yeah, there's going to be more and more with AI. It's exploded in the, in the last two years, so.
Part of the reason why the SSIS funding was so, SSIS funding was so, sorry, wrong department-
Yep.
Was so important at the legislature this year is the modernization that needs to occur in the community services realm, in the social services realm with those systems modernizations, to be able to support the needs of both the clients and the administration side of providing that service. The, the ability to automate any of that is dependent on the systems that we're required to use. And if those systems are as antiquated as SSIS is, we can't do anything about that.
Correct.
Watched an, excuse me, an interview with the CEO of Nvidia the other day-
Oh, yes, yep.
And he was saying that the new chips that they're developing have the ability to reason, which they've never had before, which means I'll be out of a job, they will be electing a robot to sit up here instead of me, with better reasoning, by the way. So, that's the future of where they're going with this.
Well, and you talk about AI, the Sheriff's Office with the, the robot dog-
Yep.
The bomb squad dog who can get access to places that are safer for the robot dog to be able to go than a deputy to be, have to go into those places. There is some reasoning that takes place with that particular robot as well. There are some things that you've witnessed in that. I believe the Sheriff's Office will have that displayed at the county fair. They like to show, the toys are always on display at the county fair, so if, if folks haven't had a chance to see how that operates, it's another operation opportunity.
This sheriff down in Florida, he's got his name stamped on everything, which is, and I-
Literally.
Literally, I mean, every squad car, everything.
Before we go on to this next stuff, one of the things you mentioned, in fact, that, you know, we're not getting as many hits coming in, you know, our percentage is going down, you know, where you said it went from six to two. The, the challenge there is you're using a percentage. How many times are we being hit? That has gone way up.
Right, correct.
And so even, even with that number going down, it still is a large percentage of, of stuff that you're going to have to look at. And, and everybody talks about the cloud, and, and I'm trying to picture this cloud. It's really data centers.
Yeah, it's, it's somebody else's computer.
It's somebody else's computer, it's a box sitting somewhere in a big building with a bunch of power going to it, that is where the cloud is.
That is correct, yep. It's, yep, it's, all it is is somebody else's computer, and they, they claim, you know, the cloud, it's unlimited resources. No, there, there's still, there's still limitations on resources, on memory and RAM and hard drive space and everything else, it's, it's not unlimited, it's, it's just somebody else's computer that's managing it, so.
And so, the third thing is, when did that come, when did it come to this time where IT is no longer support and strategic? When did that happen? Because we're already there.
Right, exactly. And it was, you know, when everything blew up probably back in two thousand eight, you know, there wasn't a lot of prog, you know, progression as far as IT went. And then all of a sudden, it just, it blew up overnight, you know, a couple of years later, where it's wanting that remote access, and that's where the, the benefit of the cloud is really prevalent, is the remote access that can access it from anywhere. That's the, one of the big selling features of the cloud is, it's in the cloud, you can access it from anywhere, you don't have to be sitting at your desk in order to access that data, so.
But, but when we look at budgeting, this is not just nice, nice boxes we have to play with, this is strategic to us doing our job.
Correct, yes. Very strategic, yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions on the AI or social media policies before we go to the next slide? All right. Jump over to GIS. GIS is our mapping system. I think you've all have used the maps at some point or another. Then you got Nate in our GIS department, he's building maps upon maps upon maps for different departments or different resources. It, it's amazing how useful all those maps are throughout the county and how beneficial they are. Our BI support, that's business intelligence, all that data that we are capturing throughout the county, you have to be able to do something to that data to make it relevant. I, I always say it's, Zach and Abby are the ones that can take all that data and make a picture that you can, you can visually see. So otherwise, that data just sits there and isn't useful for anything, but it's like, if we're capturing all that data, we need to be able to utilize that data and plan better. The data that Community Services uses a lot is, you know, the out-of-home placements, they can look at the trends, they can look at the months, and so any type of information, as long as we got those numbers, Zach and Abby can make, make those reports and pull any type of data that you need. So, if you ever, if everyone any detailed reports, let us know and we'll, we'll get you guys whatever you need.
Did Abby and Zach agree to that too?
Uh, no, but, but they, they are, they love data, they, you know, we're IT people, and so they call us kind of nerdy, I don't know why, but when they talk, it makes us go, what are you even saying? They, they love their numbers and they love their data, so. The website, this is always an really interesting graphic to look at. It shows, I've got, the information's a little bit older, but to see that there's three point eight thousand hits come, to our website coming from Australia, no idea why. But you can see that it hits from all over, all over the globe.
What, what does that mean? Just like emails or?
No, it, it's physically, they've went to our website at some point or some link. So, it very well could be a, a link in a Google search that, you know, when somebody just randomly clicks on it, and it, you know, if they're typing something in, Google, they might not look that, it says crowing.gov, they just click on it and it links you in. So it could be something relevant that they're Googling to their, something in their country or whatever.
Looking at the jail website.
Maybe they're looking at the jail website, yep, yep. Who's, who's in there today? Here's some fun facts. In the last year, there's been three hundred and thirty-six active directory account changes. What active directory is, is that that's what's used to manage all of our users. So that's either name changes, employee terminations, and new employees, promotions, supervisor changes. So there's a lot, lot of moving pieces that go on in, inside active directory every year. We blocked over two thousand nine hundred and forty viruses in CrowdStrike last year, and that's our virus protection software. We had over one point one million telephone calls come in and out of the county through the landlines or the soft phone on the computers last year. When we do our backups, it's eight hundred and eighty-eight terabytes of data. I would like to equate that, I, I know Joey talks about, you know, how much, you know, cooling fluid will fill up a water tower. I don't know how much eight point eight terabytes will fill up in the water tower, but it's, that's a lot, a lot of terabytes.
A-Rex.
Yeah. In OneDrive, our, our cloud storage, we've just started, we've just started using OneDrive, utilizing OneDrive in the last two years. We're already at four point eight terabytes of storage in OneDrive. We maintain over a hundred and eighty pages on our SharePoint site, with over a hundred and sixty-seven thousand files stored inside SharePoint. We have five hundred and sixty-two email boxes that have crowing.gov email addresses, and that is, that is now a hundred percent in the cloud. That's using two point two terabytes of storage on top of the four point eight terabytes of OneDrive. In Microsoft Teams, Teams was not a thing in, before twenty twenty. We've, in the last hundred and eighty days, we've shared our screen for over five thousand one hundred and thirty-eight hours, that's an average of thirty hours a week. Microsoft Teams, in the last hundred and eighty days, we've sent over five hundred and eighty-two thousand messages back and forth between departments, employees, groups. So that's, that's a lot, a lot of messages. Wow. That's the end of my IT stuff. I can talk all day if you want, but I, I think, you guys have other things on your agenda, so. But, any questions, let me know. Otherwise, feel free to always swing on down and, and chat, so.
Very impressive. Thank you very much.
Yes.
You have how many employees?
Uh, we have thirteen.
Thirteen?
Yep.
You'll need them with those numbers.
Yep, thirteen employees, and, you know, it's a, even though, you know, our sports, Monday through Friday, eight to four-thirty, it's a, it's twenty-four seven operation with just being vigilant, and then also on top of keeping our jail and our Sheriff's Office and police departments running, so.
Well, I know how responsive they are when we have an issue, and certainly do appreciate that.
Yes, definitely. Yep. They all take their job very, very seriously, so.
They do. Great group of people.
Thank you, guys.
Joey, how are you? Well, we were good until Jason got on there, and now we've lost a half hour.
Well, I'll try to keep it a little shorter here. Good morning, Chair and members of the board. Really, my mid-year updates focuses on CIP projects. So, not so much on the operating side, just the CIP. So, we're running twenty-nine CIP projects currently. These range in the scale of dollar amounts and sizes of the projects. Really, today what I brought is, is the large projects that we're running, the construction-related projects. So, the first one that I got that we completed here in February, this project started actually back in twenty-four, and we completed in February of twenty-five, would be our, our basement of Land Services. It was really, the intent of that was a consolidation of all of our record files. So, those are open to the public to come in and view some of those, and they were scattered throughout the facility. So primarily, the ones that the public used were in the middle level of Land Services, but for Land Services operation, there was also some on first floor, there was some in the middle level in different areas. So they were just kind of scattered throughout that whole building. So trying to consolidate them to get them at all one location, for both the public and for our staff. As part of that, there was a, a break room that was added down in the basement as well. And, you know, remodeling restrooms, there was a mothers' room added as well that we actually partnered with Crow Wing Energize to help fund that mothers' room too, so.
I would just say that I got to get a little tour down there, and I will say it really, really turned out nice. It's nice for people to go and look for records and stuff, so a really good job down there.
Yeah. And I'll also add to that, I mean, the space before that had, it was vacant office space is what it was. It was all really original to the building, there was a couple of remodels done several years ago. But, you know, there was asbestos doors down there, it just really was unutilized space, so we're able to, to turn that into something that is now usable, so. Next one, kind of a spin-off, but still talking Land Services, would be the air handler replacement. This is up and coming, the contract is currently awarded to Thielen Heating and Roofing. And I expect that work will be happening in the fall, units are currently on order. But I thought it'd be interesting to, to show some pictures of that air handler as well, if you can see up on the screen. This air handler is original to the facility, it's approximately fifty years old currently, so.
Joey, that replacement is the one that's going to require the crane to lift it over the top of the building through the side, right?
Yeah, so we'll go through, I don't know that I actually have to go through the, or over the top of the building, but we will crane it from the parking lot here, behind Historic Courthouse, or on the east side of Land Services, down that hill and into the building, so.
So it's a little, it's a little involved, more so than what a typical, open the door, take out the old unit, put in the new unit is.
Yep.
Where, where is this at? Is this in the basement by, by that new?
Yep. Yeah, there's two units both down in the basement, there's actually three total. When we expanded in oh-five, there was one unit added, but there's, the scope of the project is the two fifty-year-old units that are all in the basement, so, yeah. And then there is, the picture on the right is the control system that runs that air handler. And so, this particular system is zoned, and so there's each actuator that you see in the middle screen controls one area of that building. And so it takes a whole control system to really determine and try to satisfy what the space is. So one space might need heating, one space might need cooling, and so the, the billing automation system makes those decisions, and then will modulate those dampers that you see in that middle picture accordingly, and they do that via the control system. And the hardware is physically in the picture on the right, so.
And the software all goes through Jason's system, right?
It does, yep. Can see it all remotely, make temperature set point changes from anywhere on campus or off-campus, so.
Yeah, pretty impressive system.
Moving on from that is the Judicial Center and Community Services remodel. Happy to say that construction is substantially complete, so construction is done in those spaces, and, and they are both currently occupied. We are still working through some operation things, you know, to some last, you know, I wouldn't say last minute, but some different things just that the operations need. But, yeah, that space is currently occupied, and looking through the pictures really from left to right, that would be the second floor lobby of Community Services, looking at the Community Correction Space. Next picture would be the reception area. The next one would be their workroom where their printer and things are at. The last picture on the top on the right is the IT area that's in there. And then, working again, the bottom left to right would be meeting space and then interview rooms for them. Tried to cap picture, capture pictures of the cubicles and things like that, but they didn't show very well of really what the space was, so.
And the funding through all that, the Judicial Center was a lot that we had to do for the courts, right? But this, this Community Services remodel, that came through just our regular CPI?
So, both Community Services and Judicial Center remodels at second floor, that was all the same project and was funded by Fund Forty-three, or Capital Improvement Funds.
Okay.
Next one I'll talk about that's a current project is the, is the parking lot replacement. This was broken down into three phases, just trying to help some of the logistics of this. This project has been logistically challenging, both for the public and then also for our staff as well. So I'm happy to say that we're currently on phase three. Weather-dependent, phase three is supposed to be completed at the end of this week. Looking at the forecast, it may or may not happen, so might get it pushed into next week. There is a considerable amount of rain in the forecast yet this week, so. I do want to highlight though that the Highway Engineering Team worked with us from really start to finish on this project, and I, I have to give kudos to them. You know, as a facilities manager, I can't be experts in, I can't be an expert in absolutely everything, so when we have talents like our highway folks, let's utilize them. And, and they had the capacity to help us with this project, and that did save us a considerable amount of engineering money. And really, the ownership piece, you know, they know how to handle these projects, it's county property, and so let's make sure that we do it right. So that was a, a huge asset on this project of having our highway on it, highway team on it.
Can I ask a question on that? So-
Yep.
I know when, when Highway Department's doing a job, they, they take samples of the material to make sure they're getting the quality stuff. Did, did they do the same thing on this?
They did, yep. Yeah, they took two samples in two different areas, one was like just a, a parking area, and then one was actually in the main drive lanes, you know, so making sure that they met their compaction requirements, so. Um, the next project that I got is the jail roof replacement, so this will be, again, work happening here in- So this will be, um, again, work happening here in the fall. Contract is currently awarded to Thielen Heating and Roofing for this. Um, there was some alternates that we're moving forward with on this that we've talked about previously and that's the insulation addition. So it's additional three inches of insulation throughout that roof. Doing some calculations on that return on investment for that is, um, about eight and a half years. This is a 20-year roof that we put on there, so we will, there will be some cost savings there. And then we'll also be addressing a safety concern by putting a roof over that dumpster area. There, uh, there gets to be considerable amount of ice built up in there and, and just addressing that safety concern.
So just, just what is the cost of that roof, uh, offhand? What do?
Yeah, so the roof, the contract that we have with the alternates is 568,300 dollars.
And this is one where the bids came in?
Favorable for the counter.
Favorable from what we had estimated in the CIP.
Yeah, I thought it was gonna be a lot more, it's a lot of roof.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, the bids came in really from, you know, this approximate 550,000 all the way up to 1.1 million, so. And we had a lot of interest, both locally, you know, local contractors and then also contractors from outside the area on this project. So it was good to see so many contractors.
Just a curiosity question, how do people like Thielen or Hursthog or whoever it is, how do they know? How do they know it's, that we're looking for bids? We don't reach out to them.
No, we post it publicly, so it gets posted in the Brainerd Dispatch, um, that, that we're looking for bids on those projects.
And they, they go, oh, oh, I got a bid on this.
Yeah, it gives instructions in that post of, you know, where to go find the, the plan sets and those bid documents and then they can review it. And, and then we set up a pre-construction or a pre-bid meeting where we open the doors to them to come in and ask any questions with, uh, with the engineering firm as well. The last thing that I have that I don't have a, a slide for is just really that, um, security enhancement across campus. We're really looking at, at that heavily, as you guys know. And I, I'm currently in the process of having internal discussions with different departments. And, uh, we're, we're implementing the small changes, you know, the, and we'll be bringing back to you guys in closed session, you know, the more in-depth, bigger findings, so.
Very good, thank you Joey.
Is that any other questions? I want to add too that as I always invite you for a behind the scenes tour at any point, so if you're interested in that, reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, just wrapping up, uh, what's taken place so far this year. Wanted to highlight our, our busy election season in our non-election year. Uh, we had both, uh, school district, uh, two different school district referendums, uh, starting off with Pine River and then in Pequot Lakes, uh, that took place in March and early April. Uh, we then had the, uh, April Minnesota Senate District Six special election, where we saw fifty, little over 5,900 voters, uh, turn out for the primary and over 15,000, uh, for the general election. Uh, this special election did cost, uh, between 110,000 and 115,000 dollars for us to administer, uh, just in Crow Wing County alone. So it was, uh, elections are, are pretty substantial, uh, investments in, in time and also resources.
Joey, a question on that now. Joey, on the, on the school elections, uh, like when we do that, are, do they pay for those elections? They pay for those?
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioner, uh, yes. With, uh, Pine River being the house housed in Cass County, we provide them, uh, with our registered voters in Crow Wing County. So that went to the Cass County and then just a few weeks later, they returned the favor and sent us, uh, Pequot Lakes District Voters in Cass County, uh, to AMI in our elections area, uh, so we could make sure that we had the voter registrations, uh, and could facilitate that. So that was all we had in Pine River, was just giving them our voting, uh, folks that were eligible to vote. And then, uh, the Pequot School District, uh, did, uh, pay us back for our time and, uh, effort that we had in being their absentee polling place, uh, and helping administer their election.
But in the state, when the one we had to do for the state, there is no reimbursement for that? That's just unfunded mandate because it's a special election?
Correct, yes.
Joey, just a question on, on like, okay, so if the school has a, uh, wants to have a, um, a refer, special election or referendum, does the school board decide how many polling locations there are? Or, or is it all the polling locations are open or, or can they decide to, to bring the number of polling locations down?
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Corin, a little of both. So they have to decide what polling places they will have and they have to more or less register with the state. So with the Pequot School District election, they didn't have all precincts open. They used, uh, the precinct at the Cole Memorial Building in Pequot Lakes and the Cross Lake City Hall as the polling precincts for that, uh, special, or their school referendum election. So they didn't have, like the Breezy City Hall was not, uh, open, uh, and Mission or Lake Edward Town Hall, uh, was not a polling place.
That just seemed like it just kind of disenfranchised, that's the great word that everybody uses, disenfranchise. People when they go, let's say they go to Breezy Point and they're gonna, they want to vote on it. And then they go there and they go, mm, my polling place is closed. They don't, maybe even done their homework and don't know where to go and they, they just get PO'd and just go home.
Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Corin, it, it is dictated by statute, so they, they are following Minnesota State statute on where they set up their polling places. And, and those places have to be, um, basically secured by the end of the year and if there's a polling place change. So they, a couple of years ago when they had a referendum, they designated the Cross Lake City Hall and the Cole Memorial Building as their precincts for, uh, special elections. Since there was no change, they didn't want to make any change, they kept those two precincts. But they do have the ability to open up any or all of their precincts. They just have to submit that to the, our office and then, uh, to the Secretary of State's office.
That's their decision.
The school board has to pass a referendum by December 31st of the year prior to any elections that might occur. So any elections that would occur, as Joey said, set by statute after the end of that year, they had to make those changes by December 31st of 2024 for any elections that would occur in 2025. And schools and cities have the ability to do what they call combined polling places if the only thing that's on the ballot is that office or that question.
The next thing I want to highlight is just our continuous improvement team here at Crow Wing County. It's not so much admin services, but it's, uh, uh, very valuable work, uh, and I, I don't know how often, uh, we get an opportunity to present to you. Uh, so, uh, it's made up, our continuous improvement team is made up of 40, uh, members from all departments across Crow Wing County. And we're really looking, uh, to improve governmental services and find efficiencies and solve problems, uh, meeting our mission of serving well, delivering value, uh, and driving results. We use a number of different tools. One is a five S where we will, uh, come in and, and look at possibly a room with inventory in it and we'll sort it, uh, kind of set an order, clean things up a little bit, standardize and then make sure that we're sustaining that model. We also use lean, uh, where we look at processes and make sure we're, we're giving the customer exactly what they want, no more, no less. Uh, we also have recently started a plan do check act and that's really just a, a method of planning your work, uh, and following through, looking for some of those efficiencies. Uh, it's a, a little bit, uh, higher level than, than a lean, so it's a little quicker, uh, just for a quick analy, to analyze, uh, an issue that may be going on. We also use top facilitation where, uh, our continuous improvement number, members are trained in facilitation to help ask the right questions, to stimulate, um, dialogue and to really root, get to the root of the problem that could be taking place. We are also using results based action. That's where we start with an end goal and work our way backwards on the steps that it's going to take to get to that end goal. And then our six sigma process, uh, which is really kind of housed in manufacturing, but we've implemented it here. We're, as Jason, Jason was talking about, all that data that we have, that we can use our business intelligence analysts and our software, uh, to help determine solutions and also, uh, see what's trending to make more, uh, a better in, informed decisions. So we currently have 17 projects in a pipeline, uh, that members are working on, uh, wide ranging across, uh, most of our departments in Crow Wing County. Uh, since we implemented this process in 2016, we've completed over 100 continuous improvement projects across the county, uh, looking for efficiencies. Also wanted to just quickly highlight, um, the, uh, extension office and, uh, some of the going things that have been taking place in, in that office already this year. That they have administered 246, uh, applicator, pesticide applicator licensing tests. Uh, that's, uh, whether they're commercial, non-commercial, uh, residential farms, uh, or building maintenance. Uh, Tracy and the team in extension have been, uh, busy proctoring those tests for people that are looking to become certified. Uh, the 4H fair entries stands at 2,129, uh, from the 13 chapters across Crow Wing County. Uh, that will be taking place the end of the month here or just in a few weeks. Uh, Master Gardeners program has, uh, distributed 214 patio gardens, um, that are starting to produce already. And then as, uh, we found out late last week in the Budget Committee, that, uh, SNAP education program, uh, that's housed here in Crow Wing County will be ending at the end of August. So with that, I do just want to, uh, thank you. I've been in this position for a year now and I, uh, again, thank you for the privilege of, of working with this team. Joey, Nancy and, and Jason and all the, their team members have been absolutely tremendous to work with. As you see the results that they are, um, producing, uh, makes it extremely fun and rewarding, uh, to work with all of them i- in this environment. Uh, just a couple of things is, that we're looking at for the future is the long-range financial plan that Nancy highlighted. Uh, we hope that this will be beneficial in making decisions, uh, for the future and taking more of, uh, a, a larger look at, uh, what could be coming down, especially financially, but also, uh, just organizationally. I think it's going to, uh, be a benefit for all of you in making the decisions. As Jason said, the AI enhancement, uh, we do currently have a small little sliver of AI and that's what Babe, our chatbot. So if you go or anybody goes to the county website, uh, they'll see a little blue ox icon in the bottom. And that you can click on it and ask it, uh, any questions and it'll generate responses. So it's where do I get my birth certificate? Who's my commissioner? Uh, it's really AI generating those, so that's our first step in AI world. Uh, with that, again, Joey and his team and the continued maintenance and beautification of our campus. When Secretary Simon was here, uh, this spring, he was commenting on how beautiful the building was, how much he loves, uh, this historic courthouse. So it's, it's good to hear, uh, from someone that gets to visit all 87, that, uh, this courthouse is one of his favorites. And then, uh, just continue to work in analyzing, um, the, the mandated services, the support services that we provide, uh, for those mandates and also services, uh, that we provide. And we're going to try to get you a report by the end of the year, uh, to better, uh, inform, uh, decisions you might have to make or give you a, a little bit more, um, of the deeper dive, uh, of those mandated services, so. With that, that's all I have unless you have questions.
Go ahead. How, I haven't heard for a long time how our contract or collaboration with the city of Brainerd is going. I think we're, I believe we're still helping them. Air conditioning, uh, snow plowing sidewalks and everything. Can you just tell how, how that's going? Obviously, it must be going good, I have, we haven't heard anything.
Yeah, yeah, so we got a shared service agreement with both the city of Brainerd and then also one that we started last, um, last year with the city of Cross Lake as well for that joint works building. So we have really two shared service agreements. Um, we do continually ask both entities for feedback and all the feedback that is currently coming in is positive, so. Um, yeah, we really treat, whether it's city of Brainerd or Cross Lake is really their, their, our buildings. You know, we take care of them, we try to take the ownership just like we would our buildings as well, so.
Anything else?
That's just like, I, you know, we've talked about the airport before. That's why I, I just wonder sometime if, if we're out there, I don't know, you can comment it on Mr. Chairman, but I, I, I know that they do an excellent job of monitoring all that stuff. I don't know who monitors all the AC units and as much as we do here out there, but, um.
Right now it's just the ARF group, that's the four guys that work out there as firefighters. It's Jim or James, not James, but Jim does most of it out there and, and has given us some good advice, but we have some boilers that have to be changed out, out there, they're crashing on us, so. As I noted at our budget meeting, it's going to be interesting to hear what Mr. Plans or has discovered in the budget that we have and how we're going to get those replacements in place, so. All right, thank you very much, Joey and team, thank you. Wonderful report, we appreciate it. Is there anything else? This is terrific because I have a three-way call I have to take at 10:30, so perfect timing.
Thank you.
With that, have a good.